Yep, I think we're gonna have to pull that from the agenda. So I'm going to edit on the fly. We're waiting for one more member of staff to return to the table. He may not know we've been waiting for him, huh? I said Eric may not know we're waiting for him. Oh, for the, for presentation? So fingers crossed, technology behaves. That's, that's all we're waiting for is technology then? All right, that's good. All right. All right, everybody's ready then?
Let me think about it.
Okay.
And we'll talk about it at the work session.
Okay.
Next week.
Recording in progress.
There you go. I'm gonna call it an order, the City of Sherwood Planning Commission meeting for October 14th, 2025. Roll call.
Chair Simpson.
Here.
Commissioner Wamsley.
Here.
Commissioner Kai.
Here.
Commissioner Tilotson. And I believe we have Commissioner Barnes online.
Present.
Great.
Thank you very much. This evening, we have a consent agenda that consists of the meeting minutes, but I'm going to ask for a motion to remove the minutes so that we can have a because we haven't had a chance to read them yet. I think they got sent out in, in speaking with the commissioners. We have not received those yet. We have a motion to remove the meeting minutes from the agenda.
So moved.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that we remove the meeting minutes to the next meeting. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, opposed, motion carries. All right, moving on to council liaison announcements. Councilor Giles.
Yeah.
Welcome this evening.
Thank you, glad to be here, thank you. So the main things that we're worried about right now, we're doing another work session on some of the laws that are coming out of Salem for land use that I'm sure you're also gonna be briefed on. We're, we're working with our land use attorney and planning department to see how we can make sure to keep everybody happy and whole based on what we've promised for Sherwood West. We want to make sure to develop it the way that we promised the community that we would, and so we are looking at doing that. We also have, we did a couple of ribbon cuttings this last week for the IQ Credit Union over by the Langer Establishment and for Chick-fil-A. And then actually tonight for the Goldfish Swim School. We are also, since we last met, we opened the bridge, the pedestrian bridge, where it was a big fun event. Hopefully several of you were there. We were, we cut the ribbon and then marched across with a marching band. So there's plenty of, I think that was the final stress test they wanted to do. In fact, we asked the engineers and they said if somebody was, if we packed people start to finish all the way across and they jumped up and down on it, we'd still be fine. So no, no fears there. And it was a great event that the city did. We came in under budget, we came in under time. I mean, it was really a phenomenal event. And then, let's see, so coming up, we've I'm trying to think of the one other thing I want to remember. Oh, we have additional work sessions for the laws that will be passing. So please reach out if you've got any ideas or thoughts as to how we can can work with that. We've been doing two, we had two sessions on the different bonds that are looking to pass. One is a library bond that is going out and is an increase, but it is, if you look at, you know, the cost of doing anything, they didn't get an increase last time when they did it, four years ago or five years ago. And so this time they are asking for an increase, but we're you know, just to, just to, things have gotten more expensive essentially. And the other one was for the sheriff's bond. And a big portion of that is to redo the courthouse, to make, you know, massive upgrades to some of the equipment and facilities that the sheriff is using. So it's a public safety bond. Any questions for me or anything I could bring back to the council?
No, appreciate.
Besides what's in here?
No, I I appreciate all the work that the council is doing when they are monitoring and staying on top of. I know staff helps and council being lobbyists towards our own city legislation or state legislature is
Yeah, we're very, very close communication. We've got a lawyer that specializes in that, but we also, we, we, I mean, we're getting our money's worth out of our lobbyists because we're, we're just getting the information very quickly. And then I've also talked with our representatives, the state representatives, both of them are very supportive of our stance. And so we're hopeful that we can continue to have home rule and just, so anyway, keep, keep emailing your, your folks in Salem, but also know that they agree. So don't be too harsh on them, but let them know you're, you're with us. So, thank you.
Thank you. Before we move on to staff announcements, I see that there are more people that have entered the room. We have citizen comments and we have a public hearing this evening. If you would like to testify at either one of those, we ask that you fill out one of the blue cards on the back table and turn it into Hugo so that we can call you up under the proper order of business. All right, staff announcements?
Thanks Chair Simpson. My only staff announcement is that the latest Sherwood West appeal was won by the city and by Metro. So this was appealed to the Land Conservation and Development Commission, LCDC, and that commission upheld Metro's decision to expand the urban growth boundary into Sherwood West. So we do expect further appeals and we'll be a party to those when, when they come. Maybe another six months to nine months or so for a full resolution, depending on that last appeal. That's the only announcement.
All right. All right, next are community comments. Community comments are limited to those items not already on the agenda. I'll have Hugo bring up any cards for people who wish to testify under community comments. Okay, wonderful. Neil Shannon?
Hello. I'm screen, so I take it it's on?
It is, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Neil Shannon and I reside in Sherwood. Thanks for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. Ever since the state legislature passed HB 2001 requiring clear and objective standards for the development planning provisions, excuse me, provisions of the Sherwood Design Code, otherwise referred to as the Tree Code, have been adjudicated as void as they are not clear and objective. I've been looking forward for the opportunity for this commission to review and revise the Tree Code. Unfortunately, it's been five years and still the commission has not addressed the problems. I've talked to staff about this issue and been advised that staff is busy and we'll get around to it. I think we need to do better than get around to it. I understand that the city and staff have been exceptionally busy with the time-sensitive Sherwood West project. In addition, I recognize that this commission does not direct staff priorities, but you can share your concerns with city council and the city manager. Every year for the last two decades, Sherwood has proudly declared itself Tree City USA. Unfortunately, with so many protections of the tree within the city limits voided, that declaration rings a bit hollow. Sherwood has a proud tradition as a tree-loving city. Developers choose to build here because of the value of the name that Sherwood provides. It is not unreasonable to apply guidelines to protect the nature that Sherwood considers so valuable. I know that you're working hard to try and address the multitude challenges of Sherwood West, but the issue of trees, trees, particularly trees in the Sherwood West area cannot be ignored. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I, I appreciate your comments and we have our council liaison with us this evening and I appreciate that that will be a concern we need to have
Yeah.
council and staff look at. Thank you. All right. We have one more? Okay. Thank you. Okay, and I don't have any for the applicant. Okay. All right. There are no other community comments. All right, then we will move on to public hearings. All right. The public hearing on Old Town Multifamily Rock Point Land Use Case File LU 2025-007 SP VAR is called to order. I will turn it over to staff for the hearing introduction.
The public hearing this evening will be conducted as follows. Staff will present the staff report, 15 minutes. Questions, if any, by the hearing body for staff. We will then open the public hearing for testimony and time will be limited as follows. Applicant, 30 minutes, split between the presentation and rebuttal. Persons in favor, four minutes each. Persons opposed, four minutes each. Rebuttal from the applicant, remainder of the 30 minutes. Then no other testimony will be taken from the public or the applicant unless public testimony, unless the public testimony period is reopened. Final comments by staff, 15 minutes. Questions of staff, if any, by the commission and deliberation by the commission. A decision may be made by the planning commission at the close of the hearing or the matter may be continued to a, to a time and date certain. If the matter is continued to a date certain, this will be the only notice of that date you receive. Staff will recognize people who have signed up to speak 24 hours in advance to provide testimony virtually. When it is your time to provide testimony, please state your name and address for the record. Staff did not receive any notification 24 hours in advance from anyone wanting to provide virtual testimony. Of course, we do have people in the audience. If you are in the audience this evening, this evening and wish to speak, please fill out one of the testimony forms and submit it to planning staff. The chair will recognize people who wish to speak. When you come forward, please state your name and address for the record. Any questions should be addressed through the chair. In reaching a decision on the application, the commission must consider whether the application meets the relevant approval criteria in the city's land use regulations. Those criteria are identified in the staff report. Staff report is available online and at City Hall. The staff report was accessible to the public seven days prior to this meeting date. The testimony and evidence must address these criteria or other criteria you believe to apply to the decision. Please note failure to raise an issue with enough detail to enable the commission, the applicant and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issues precludes an appeal to the city council or land use board of appeals on that issue. Also, failure by the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues regarding proposed conditions of approval with enough detail to allow the commission to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. At this time, I would like to ask members of the commission to disclose any ex parte contact bias or conflicts of interest. Please indicate the nature and extent of the ex parte contact bias or conflict of interest and indicate whether you intend to participate in or abstain from the hearing. Commissioner Kai?
None.
Commissioner Wamsley?
None.
Commissioner Tilotson?
None.
Commissioner Barnes?
None.
And Chair Simpson?
None.
Thank you. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge any planning commissioners, any planning commission members' ability to participate? Seeing none, turn to staff for the staff report.
Thank you Eric. So as summarized, the applicant is Rock Point Construction and site address is located at 15665 Southwest Wood Lamont Street. Proposal including a site plan review to develop multifamily structure consisting of 32 dwelling units and to Class A variances pursuant to the criteria identified under Senate Bill 1537. The zone is high-density residential and located within the Old Town overlay, Old Canary area. And public notice, public testimony and agency comments as or routed as accordingly. Agency and departmental comments were routed on August 27th to public agencies such as ODOT, Triment, Washington County for any comments, if any, and have been included within the staff report if received. Public notice was mailed to, mailed, posted on the site and put for general wide city circulation on or before September 24th with two newspaper notices running on September 26th and October 3rd. At this time, no public comments were received prior to this hearing. And here's an overview of the applicable criterion associated with this land use decision. Pretty standard stuff. The, the only thing that I think is probably important to point out is that SB 1537 was used and evaluated and the mechanism of our 1684.030C variance procedures were utilized to implement SB 1537. Looking at the site location, you can see it's about 1.14 acres in size with a land use history of fairly recently LU 2021-022 Site Plan VAR Minor Land Partition. This was never developed and had expired on March 14th, 2024. Here's also an overview of the Old Town area. So you can see that the site location is smack dab within the Old Canary area and is adjacent to the Old Smockville area, two areas delineated within our code and, and just general boundaries. Multifamily dwellings are permitted in the High Density Residential Zone District. So staff briefly wanted to touch base on Senate Bill 1537 because this is the first time I believe it is being used to implement a development. So it was adopted by the Oregon Legislature in 2024, signed by Governor Kotek. It became effective July 1st, 2025 and is deemed a sunset on January 2nd, 2032. Ultimately, for what's relevant to this particular development and developments in the future is that cities and counties must approve up to 10 adjustments to the development standards if certain eligibility criteria is met. The applicant essentially has to say how one of these series of things apply. And in general terms, you know, you can look at like, are they in the urban growth boundary? Are they within this certain area? But for this particular development, the adjustments requested will enable the development of housing that is not otherwise feasible due to costs or delay resulting from unadjusted land use regulations. The adjustments will also enable development of housing that reduces the sale or rental prices per residential unit and the resident, and adjustment will increase the number of housing units overall. So you can see at the top, there's the eligibility, eligible adjustments that the applicant has sought. And then below that, basically how it is kind of tied into our land use regulations. They're seeking a 10% reduction of the minimum lot size standards for multifamily dwellings beyond the first two units from 1,500 square feet to 1,350 square feet. And a 16.96% increase to the maximum density standards under the HDR Zone District from 24 to 28.07 dwelling units per acre. This is just a brief overview of our site plan review criteria. Basically, one through six. This is just kind of making sure that it meets the applicable development standards other identified throughout the code overall. How preserves natural resources, if, if necessary. How it kind of prevent, or how it proposes like EV charging stations to at least, or conduits, sorry, conduits to at least 40% of all vehicle parking spaces. This one is .7 and this is side to our multifamily dwelling urban design standards. So we're, we're gonna probably get a little bit more into this, but it talks about basically primary front entrances being located oriented to the street, adjacent and flush. Talks about architectural features of the building, not using aluminum vinyl RT11 siding. This is kind of, so staff's response has been delineated throughout the staff report. We have worked very heavily with the applicant to ensure that, you know, these criteria are effectively met or can be conditioned so. So looking at the elevation architectural renderings that we do have, this is the project as it stands currently when the application was deemed complete. There you can see the rear, rear where the off-street parking area will be located. The material legend is in the bottom left portion of the screen, kind of giving more contextualized idea of, of the types of materials that will be incorporated into the structure overall. One thing to point out is the incorporation of cedar siding at the primary entrances. You can see it located right here, but also within the primary entrance right nestled there. Kind of delineating and framing the prime, those primary points of entry. Here is a side view of the northeast elevation. As you can see, the brick doesn't necessarily stop directly at the front facade, but actually wraps around the building overall, kind of creating this sense of transition. And there, this is the off-street parking area as required or as defined under 1694. Please note this site is actually located within CFAC, which is another, another state legislation that basically eliminates minimum parking standards within certain areas. The applicant is providing 40 off-street parking stalls, you know, which would, in, in a traditional development outside of these areas would only require 32. Here's an overview of the site plan. As you can see, the structure here is kind of in the northeast vicinity with off-street parking in the middle and then amenities provided towards the south in the form of basketball court and playground. So just looking at access, access is primarily going to be gauged from Southwest Columbia Street with two-way traffic circulation. Due to our access management standards and the engineering design manual standards, we cannot permit vehicle access off of Pine except in the case of emergency access as further delineated within the staff report provided with conditions B15 and D5 specifically stating the insulation of bollards. And then the development does propose some amenities at the south, against Southwest Wood Lamont Street. And so those are the three identified frontages with this proposal. Infrastructure and transportation, so essentially, you know, this is kind of all devised in your guys' staff report, but Columbia Street, just gonna switch back here, is where they're kind of proposing access. Really, the conditions of approval are more tied to, you know, when you install the driveway, make sure that you put everything back accordingly. Full frontage improvements, by the way, with Southwest Columbia, that was a city project that we went, did, I believe, a few years back as well. So no, no additional improvements are required by the applicant beyond just put it all back. Southwest Pine, so Southwest Pine, there's gonna be a fee and lieu payment gonna be required with this particular development along their, their specific frontage, obviously subject to proportionality. But requiring the applicant to do these improvements would be unfeasible just really due to the curvature of the existing street. So the city has the plan essentially in the future to come back and redo Pine, but at this current time, it doesn't necessarily make sense to have the applicant do a portion of that. With Southwest Wood Lamont Street, same thing, fee and lieu. Basically, the, the standards that put the infrastructure there previously isn't necessarily the same standards that would be implementable today. So having them do the improvements along Southwest Wood Lamont Street kind of create the same error, right? Where it would just kind of potentially create more issues than not. So the applicant is required or recommended to pay a fee and lieu specifically for their frontage along Southwest Wood Lamont Street for a future improvement project along that area. It is important staff received a letter regarding the proportionality and access concerns for the fee and lieu for specifically Southwest Wood Lamont Street dated October 14th, 2024. So today. And that was provided to the commissioners prior to this hearing.
Thanks Hugo, take over from here. So we released the staff report originally a week ago, October 7th. Since then, we've had really good conversations with the applicant. Also have consulted our land use attorney about some of the findings in the original staff report. And so we are recommending some changes, some revisions to the staff report and to the conditions. So I'm just gonna briefly go over those. Some of them are design related and so we can walk through kind of exactly what, you know, what, what that means for the design. And in this case, actually, it's, it's going to mean essentially we're recommending no changes actually to the design at this point. But the first is adopt a finding of compliance for Sherwood Municipal Code 16.90020D7A and strike condition of approval B4 related to the main lobby entrance articulation. And essentially there, we are now recommending that, that that standard be identified as, as met. And, and I'll get through all these and then we'll go back to the, the renderings and I'll just walk through kind of why we, why we, why we're recommending this at this point. Also related to D7 subsection B and striking condition B6 related to the building setback. Also adopt a finding of compliance for front setback encroachments into, into the front setback for up to six feet for architectural features that meet the definition of a porch. I'll explain that. We made a modification to A4 just to really focus and emphasize that the Doug fir, the two Doug fir trees should be preserved. The code does allow them basically, you know, if, if it's not feasible, they, they can be removed, but we wanted to really reinforce that we want them there and but we wanted to really reinforce that we want them there. And the allowances of removal would still be allowed, but they'd have to come back and potentially come back to planning commission if those trees needed to be removed in the future. And so this condition really just firms that up, the change to the condition firms that up. And I won't go through the rest, they're really just kind of Scrivener errors on the last two. So Hugo, if you can go to the the front rendering, that'd be great. Yeah, there you go. So first, I just want to say that the applicant, you know, submitted this a few months ago. The building looked quite, quite different, same overall form, same overall massing, but the architectural features were quite different. And I, and I believe the applicant does have some slides that shows the before and after. And I just want to thank, really thank the applicant for working with staff on, you know, reaching compliance with the code. And we think that the changes that have been made are quite good and the applicant can go over those. Regarding the the changes to the findings in the staff report, the, the, the main one is that that front canopy that you see there where the entrance is. The staff report originally had a finding that that was encroaching into the front setback and therefore was was not allowed by the code. We did a little bit of digging in the code. We were able to find a standard that allows that and it's basically to say, this is a considered a porch by definition, which it is. Cover over an entrance, open on both sides is the definition. And so that that basically you can encroach six feet into the front setback for porches. That that's the main, the main standard or the main, the main change there. Related to that is that top dark line, which is called an eve by architectural standards. We are also recommending to call that a porch and and allowing it to project two feet into the front setback under that definition. The reason that we're recommending that is the only other, the only other option really is for the applicant to go really back to the drawing board as soon as the, and the applicant can speak more to this, but as soon as the building gets pushed back and, you know, they, they, as soon as it gets pushed back, the parking, the sidewalk on the side, everything else in the back really gets squeezed. And so we really appreciate the architectural features that are on this building and we don't want the, the, the code to prohibit them. And so we're trying to find a way that is viable under the code for these frankly really nice architectural features to remain. And so that's what staff is recommending. The only other change was related to the, the setback of the building relative to the street. There's a little jog in the street, which we don't need to look at now, but there's a little bit, there's a little jog. And the staff report, there's a condition that basically says for a single portion there, it was not met because the building was not flush for that entire 14 feet as the, as the property line jogs. In talking with the applicant and some of the impacts to the building, I think it's completely reasonable to have a finding that says because a majority of the building is on and meets that setback line that that standard is met. So those are the nature of the changes. I think all of them, you know, sort of the, the changes to the staff report and the conditions will allow this, this design to move forward with the really good features that that are on it. And so that's the reason for the changes and let's, let's go back to the, to the end. There you go. Go back, there you go, you can go there. So essentially, the, the staff recommendation for tonight, we are recommending that you continue the hearing for to a date certain of two weeks. The, the reason for that is because the letter we received, Hugo didn't mention it, but it's, it's from a, an attorney, a land use attorney, expressing concern about the fee and lieu for pine for Lamont Street. We want to make sure to get that right as staff. And so we need, frankly, we need time to look at that, work with our land use attorney and be able to respond, you know, on the record on that. So we're recommending a continuance for two weeks. We recommend that you weigh in on the changes to the staff report as well. Do you agree? Do you disagree? You know, if you agree and you just need to give us that, that nod and then we'll go back and revise the findings formally in order to strike some of those conditions and revise the findings. So the recommendation is to direct staff to, is to continue the hearing to October 28th, 7:00 PM. And then if you agree, ask us to revise the staff report consistent with slide 23, which is the one I just went over and plus anything else that the commission has. You do have alternatives tonight. You can approve the application based on the findings and conditions in the staff report as written. You can approve the application with revised findings or conditions. You can continue the hearing to a date certain of October 28th, 7:00 PM, or you can deny the application with revised findings. And happy to take any questions.
Oh, just procedurally, the document that was put on the days for us prior to the meeting is exhibit K to be added to our packets. And I appreciate the staff's ability to ask for a continuance so we all have an opportunity to read this late submittal. Procedurally, I just want to make sure I understand that if the commission entertains continuance this evening, we would still hold the public hearing and allow applicant and opponents and proponents and neutral people to testify this evening. And then we would continue it to the date certain of October 28th. And since the record's being kept open for staff to revise the findings, when we come back on the 28th, would then additional testimony be taken from both the applicant and from members of the community if additional testimony was
Yes.
Wanted to be submitted?
Yep. And so for members of the public, if you're coming into this, I guess last minute, there would be an opportunity for a written comment, if you'd like to do that. And then you can also come to the next hearing and provide oral testimony as well.
And so if they don't feel comfortable testifying this evening or on the 28th, what's the avenue for doing a written testimony?
Yeah.
What's the timing of that?
Yeah, it would need to be, you can, the latest you can do it is during the hearing on the 28th. So you'd come again to this and submit it at the hearing on the 28th or anytime before then and you just email it to Hugo or myself. The email is planning@sherwoodorgan.gov and that will get to us.
And if it gets to the planning department before the 21st, that gives it an opportunity to be delivered to the planning commissioners in time to read it before the hearing. Otherwise, if it's, if we get a lot of stuff handed to us at the hearing, we either have to take a recess so we can read it.
Mm-hmm.
But we will have to make a decision based on the 120-day law at the next hearing. So just be mindful if you want to provide testimony. It really helps us out as commissioners. And for those of you who are new here, we are volunteers. We live in Sherwood. We do this with no compensation, just for our love of the community. And so if you can bring it in by the 21st and get it emailed in, then it gets to us and then we have a chance to spend our weekends reading extra, extra documents. So that, that does help us out so that we could fully understand what's going on and not feel rushed in, in, in reading what people are, are concerned about. So thank you for that clarification. Before we call the applicant up and continue on with the agenda, does it, do any of the commissioners have any questions for staff before we go into the hearings itself?
Yes, Commissioner Kai. Hugo, could you go back to the, to the front elevation? And my question was regarding balconies and if we have anything incorporated in terms of what can be left out on street-facing balconies?
Just, just for clarification, you're talking like about residential possessions, is that correct?
Yeah, and I have recollection, recollection of situations like this with, with other developments where street-facing balconies like just need to be kept or maintained for for visual aesthetic in terms of not being overly crowded or, or anything like that. I was wondering if, if there was anything incorporated into, into that for, for this?
Yeah, yeah, I can answer that. So there's nothing specifically within Title 16, so the development code that went particularly managed that. So the only thing that really talks about management is management of the amenities. So making sure that those are properly maintained and repaired, but nothing that manages particular possessions.
Okay. So, so then from, from the city standpoint, there's not anything that's correct? Speaking of report that is, is there, is there anything that we can incorporate language-wise regarding street-facing balcony that the commission feels that's a concern?
So the only thing that the commission can essentially review or I guess kind of consider are any of the criteria enlisted within Title 16 at the time of application submittal. Since that was not present at the time of submittal, unfortunately, we can't, we can't condition that.
Okay. The, the only, only thing I would add, if the applicant wants to speak to what the, you know, there is going to likely be rules for the community. It might say, you know, no XYZ on the balcony for safety reasons or something else. And so unfortunately, I agree, there's, there's not much that he can do here. What I will say is like, if there's a dangerous situation of, you know, something hanging over, something like that, you know, we could likely address that through code compliance. If it's like actually a, a, a safety issue, you know, building code or something like that, we could address that. But general visual clutter can't address through the code.
All right, thank you.
All right. So we do want the applicant an opportunity to provide his testimony before we go into staff questions. So if we could go ahead and if you have questions regarding the code, stuff like that, we can hit it after the applicant testimony. And I don't have any cards or names, so I'll just ask that the applicant can come up and then if you could, anybody that wishes to speak, if we could have you give your name and city of residence for the record itself, that would be great. And then I don't know who's doing the timer. I thought it was a great question.
I can do this as well.
We'll put our, we'll put our city councillor to work. They have 30 minutes before combined join before and after.
I'll be back up for you councillor. Not that I don't trust you, but.
We won't be that long. You have that on it. Maybe just pull it up on the screen or, okay.
We're in here.
Ah, I should, here you go. Good evening, guys. Thank you for listening to this exciting stuff. Commissioner Kai, to answer your question, we actually have a really
I'm sorry. I need you to start with your name and city of record for the
I'm Adrian Oltean. I live in Damascus.
Perfect. And the other gentleman?
Yeah, my name is Matthew Rustnik. I live in Milwaukee.
Okay.
I want to chime in on that because we have a pretty strict policy on our other buildings when it comes to that. So we don't allow clutter, we don't allow signage, we don't, so it's, we, we see it, we, there's a fine involved to it. So it stays pretty, pretty clean.
Great, thank you for that.
So we really don't have, I mean, staff kind of shared most of the information about the building. We really just have like design picture or design slides and things that maybe the neighborhood wants to kind of discuss and talk about. So we're just going to really go through a few slides, maybe kind of talk through them and how we kind of came to this design. So Hugo, is it just the?
Just do the
So the design team, so I'm actually the contractor and part owner in the building. So I'll be doing the building, the construction of the building down, down here and Matthew is the architect. Again, this is something Hugo went over, the location of the building, so we won't go through that. Here's just some pictures we kind of, kind of took to show everybody like sort of the coloring and how we kind of came up with, with trying to keep our building to kind of, at least within the close proximity of our building, how it would look. I think here's the civil building, there's our lot right across from the park. The arts theater, so we have, you know, again, we have some green, but very, you know, color and, and stone is pretty similar. That building's a little bit different, but it's got the balconies and, you know, it's newer, so. So that's kind of how we came with, within our color palette and trying to work with staff to kind of keep it, what's the word? Oh, here's a couple more within kind of the downtown. So anyway, that's what those really are. I think, you want to speak to something on those?
Well, I just want to say that what we noticed is a very fairly eclectic collection of different design styles in the urban core of Sherwood. So we kind of wanted to take stock of each of those and sort of synthesize them in our project.
Can we have you pull the microphone a little bit closer?
Yeah.
Wish we had a second one.
Oh, of course. Yeah, just to repeat in case anyone didn't hear. We really, what we observed in the downtown core of Sherwood was a very eclectic mix of different styles and building types, but mostly one or two stories, some historical, a lot of brick or a few handful of brick buildings. So what we want to do is kind of synthesize what we saw and bring it together into a project that kind of resonates with all, all the different pieces of architecture already existing.
Thank you. So that's how we, you know, and we work with staff along the way, the whole, you know, to get to this, this final product. This slide here just kind of shows, if you see, we have a, a lot of open space. We're actually using quite a bit more than what's required to still kind of have, even though it's a big building with parking lot, we've, we've given it a lot of open space to, to the tenants, a lot of trees, I think we've planted, what were some of the old, what were the old trees?
Yeah, there's, there's quite a few nice, really nice willow trees on the site right now. And our site plan right now is, we don't, there's a condition in the staff report where we have to meet canopy coverage. So we do plan on adding a few more trees. We don't really show any right now in the kind of rec area or on the south side of the lot. So we do have planned to add a few more and we kind of want to recall or kind of maintain the feel of the site right now and try to bring back some of that character as we develop the project.
Yeah, during our public meeting, that was kind of stressed by the neighborhood. And so we want to let everybody know we really are wanting to, to plant as much as we can and we, if we talk about trees, we like trees too. So this is again, going back to how the building looks, everyone's kind of seen it. Just, you know, we'll, we'll kind of skip through that and just talk material board a little closer up for everybody kind of look at. Then I think we'll skip these and I, or do you want to talk about the?
Yeah, I'll talk about the materials just really quickly. Yeah, so our materials, we're really looking at fairly neutral and kind of earth tone palette, just to again, speak to the site as it is right now and also the existing architecture that surrounds it. So pulling, yeah, from nature and also trying to match some of the brick color of the existing buildings. So that was kind of the intent behind our selection of colors and palette.
Skip to, so this is a slide we wanted to show how we started towards the finish line of the product. And this is where we kind of landed when we went and started working with staff more. As you can see, there's no front lobby. We had those kind of pillars on the outside. We were using like a brick veneer. Our windows were fixed or sliding windows. So if, you know, the color palette kind of looks similar, but if, once we, you know, kind of flip the page, you'll see that if you look, pay attention to the windows, obviously the entryway, the canopy, we closed in those, those sides of the balconies. And that was all kind of working as a team with staff to, to bring the product to where it is today. That's right there.
It's a great before cover.
Yeah, that's what I think. Worked out really well when I just clicked that. So yeah, we just want to stress that we really did, we did work with staff, with Hugo and with Eric quite a bit to, to get to this. And we did have a pretty good neighborhood meeting and we were hoping And we did have a pretty good neighborhood meeting and we were hoping to address a lot of the comments there. And I guess a lot of it was about trees and, and trying to keep the, the building looking like it's, it's blending in. So we think we achieved that. I think staff agrees. And again, these are just elevations. So. And I, we have, we have extra slides if anybody's interested in any kind of floor plans, but I don't think that's going to be too relevant to, you know, this meeting. So we have that. And so we're really just prepared to talk if anybody's got questions on, on basically the design of the building. We don't have any really complaints or anything like that. We've been at it with, with staff already to, to hash things out. So we're just here to answer questions about our design. Was Matthew, you've got anything else you want to? I think. Right now.
Anything else?
Yeah, we're good.
So that was seven, 7:25. So you've got plenty of time on the clock.
Okay. All right. It's a little awkward because we're going to have a continuance and some of these conditions of approval are going to be modified through that process. Because usually I would ask if you're with, based on the, the recommendations from the staff, have all your concerns and conditions been addressed? But I know that we're going to have a continuance. I'll probably reach out to you at that hearing, at the continuance.
I think that'd be good. I think, sorry to, through the chair, please. You know, we, we want to hear from you guys in, in the short deliberation that you do do, get, get that feedback. Make sure you're on the same page. Staff will revise that. And, you know, we really want to get the detail down on paper in the revisions and then have the applicant review and, and agree to those. Much more appropriate at the next hearing.
Yeah. I, I, I guess if I asked a question and I didn't see it on there, is the buffering between the play area and the existing house? Is that a solid fence there or?
Between the play area and the, we, I don't think we show it on it right now, but I, we will be putting one. I don't think it's required. But the, right, because we decided it wasn't required, but we were gonna, we were gonna put one in. So that was like on the plans because it wasn't part of the requirement. Let's see, we can go back. I think we originally showed one, but.
And I don't mean you'd have to stop it. I just was looking at it, thinking that, that it would be nice to have a, a solid wall and even extra screening on that to the existing neighborhood.
And you're talking like where the play structure is? Or, I mean, we obviously have neighbors. So we'd already talked about how we were going to screen the parking lot.
Yeah.
And again, those aren't requirements, but we were going to do it anyway and have a fence around. So.
So if we, we put it in the plan or in the conditions for the fence, it's not going to be an issue if we add it as a condition.
Correct. We were going to do it now.
Okay, perfect. Beautiful. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant before we call for members of the public to testify?
On, on that same note, I'm just curious, the property towards the front that is adjacent to the, the property question, on that side, is fencing necessary along, along that space? Because I know that that's, is that just city property?
Yeah, on the top left of this image?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a city owned property. I believe it's zoned commercial. So it'll be commercial in the future. You know, if, if the code doesn't require it, it would just be voluntary on the applicant to provide the fence. You know, right now, I think that site is also fairly treed as well. And so it's likely that there's going to be, you know, some existing buffer existing. So I think, you know, just what I'd recommend is if it's in the applicant's plans, great. If not, it's, it's not a code requirement. And I, I don't see a, a huge need for it at this point.
Okay. Perfect. All right.
I had a quick question. I failed to mark the exact wording, but there was mention in the staff report of terminology that, that you had used for how the play structure and the basketball court were going to be maintained. And it mentioned a homeowners association and that was somewhat confusing to me. Is that a, is that a standard way of maintaining that kind of an area within apartment complex?
No, and that's, the homeowner association part was something, it, it was just through property management. So I think the homeowner association part, I, there was, we had asked, I think, some question on that too. But it's, so our property management, edge management, they'll have a standard of that maintenance and how, you know, it's not through any HOA. It's just kind of like our balconies. We have a standard in our, in our guideline on how we treat the building, how the tenants, so that it'll be written in there.
The same management of the parking lot, for example, will be for the.
Correct. Correct. Yeah.
Thank you.
And I think Hugo was going to jump in. What that condition would do is that if the project turned into a condominium building in the future, then it likely would be an HOA and then they would be responsible. So it kind of captures, I guess, a, a very future possibility.
All right. Any other questions of the applicant before we call on the public to testify?
I have several for the applicant and our staff. Maybe it's time to jump into that one.
Okay.
So. Thank you. Quick question then, with respect to, I'll lower my hand.
Oh, I can't see that. Okay.
Yeah. I was just waiting my turn. With respect to the site plan and specifically the property line where the dug firs are located. You had mentioned a fence. I had to reciprocate and want to emphasize the first speaker's concerns about a tree protection, tree protocol and ordinances for the city. So that's something that I, I am wholeheartedly behind. Now looking at the location of the trunk and the, basically what would be considered the tree protection zone, the canopy of the tree, it certainly looks like it's right on the property line. So my question with respect to those two trees, is that a shared type of situation where the, the tax lot to, to the east there has some concern? My secondary concerns are the development of the tree or the actual play structures within the tree protection and root protection zone of those dug firs has the potential to cause a safety hazard. If, for example, the area is ripped up and more or less graded out as part of the project, that has the potential to affect basically 50% of each tree, which would, in my opinion, need to have an arborist clarify or confirm what that may do to those trees.
So do we have?
Second.
Oh, sorry. I was going to say, do we, we have a condition that just talks to the tree drip line and the protection area?
Yeah, we have a condition specifically talking about the protection of tree during the development and the maintenance of that. I can, I can pull that up real quick or?
No, I just want to make sure that. We're on board with that. Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Barnes.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't see anything that specified tree protection zones, root protection zones, you know, five feet from the canopy or 15 feet from the trunk, whichever is greater. But that's something that I like to have resolved. Second.
Sorry, Commissioner Barnes, we're going to keep, keep interrupting you while, while Hugo's looking that up. The, the code is quite strict. I think you'd be pleased to see, you know, what the code actually requires. And I'm going to summarize it while Hugo pulls up the exact condition. But basically it says that, that prior to final site plan approval, there needs to be a final tree protection plan. And, you know, what's required there is, is quite specific about the drip line of the tree, about what needs to happen during construction, including potential arborist supervision, et cetera. So I think we can, we can pull that up and, and give you the details or you can look at it. But go ahead while we're still looking.
Yeah. So I think that I was, I went through most of the package. Wanted some clarification on that. Second, the requirements in the code are for a tree inventory. And reviewing the, the site plan and the, and some of the work that was included in the package under, let me pull it up here. I'm looking at it online. The wetland delineation, for example, just had the tree canopies listed. And under, here it is, under the 9870 topo, which I assume to be the tree inventory, they're listed as deciduous trees and deciduous sprawl. The only trees that are called out as conifers are the firs. And I'm just wondering if, and this is a question for staff, if an arborist went out to those sites and actually confirmed the, what looks to be CAD or just shot in locations of deciduous trees? Or if there was an actual list of trees that were onsite within the wetland?
So is this a question that we have right now or was that, would have been done through the DSL permit process? Where everybody would have done something like?
Commissioner Barnes, can you clarify the question? Is it whether or not?
Sure. Well, my concern generally is the replacement ratio for some of the trees. As, as mentioned by the applicant and others, right, if the firs are affected, there's replacement. There's also replacement for landscape trees that are to be planted to replace the trees that are here. But the question, and what the code alluded to, or at least referred to was, I believe it was applicable trees within the landscape contractors or the, the plant list. Let me verify, suggested plant list for required landscaping manual. Just reviewing that, I want to make sure that we're clear as to what species we're actually going to be removing within the subject parcel.
Gotcha.
And whether or not the criteria for those trees should be additional replacement trees versus considered, you know, native versus non-native. I know a majority of those trees are non-native, obviously, but the fact, the fact that there is no biological assessment for this site, at least within the record that I've able to see, indicates that there's some room for discretion.
Yes. At a, at a, at a very high level, the way that, the way the tree code works in the city is there's language that says the, in the site plan review criteria, applicant or developer shall preserve trees to the maximum extent feasible. There's then also some, you know, specific requirements about inventory. And then as the member of the public provided testimony at the start of the hearing, code that applies to when and how a tree can be protected. We have findings in the staff report and we can go, we can go back to that if we need to and, and see what those findings are. If, if it's not practicable to preserve the trees, then the, the code allows removal unless the commission finds A, B, C, or D. And as we heard earlier, and we can take a look and drill down into exactly which ones are not clear and objective. But based on some past applications, a majority of those are not clear and objective. So they can't be applied, unfortunately. When and if those trees are removed, the application is, the applicant is required to install for, in, in case of residential, 40% tree canopy over the site at maturity of those trees. So, you know, whether, and the, the trees onsite that are protected can count towards that 40% canopy. And I think that's what you're, what you're referring to in terms of counting double. So for example, the, the proposal is to protect the two onsite fir trees. Those are going to have a canopy calculation. And if I'm recalling correctly, the code doubles that for determining the contribution to the 40% overall canopy. And so I think what you're asking, Commissioner, is if other trees on the site are going to be preserved, can we identify those and, and have the, have the calculation determined for preservation and for the, the tree canopy calculation? Does that sound right?
Let me clarify a little bit and thanks for that, Eric. Yeah, that's somewhat correct in terms of what I was trying to. Instead of preservation, I would think of mitigation. So if there's a native tree that's of a certain DBH, the replacement of those trees shall be offset. Now, I understand there was wetland credits already purchased for the site and that's been handled. So that's a separate issue. With respect to the replacement trees themselves for any native tree that's over a certain DBH based on our code, whether those would be mitigated in addition to, because they're not being preserved, right? It's still, we are going to be, they are required based on the number of parking lots or parking stalls they have to offset with those trees. That's a separate issue from removal of native trees within the project site is what I'm trying to.
Yeah, I think the best way to boil it down is if they preserve the onsite trees, A, we want them to, obviously, and they, they need to be native, not non-native or invasive. If they protect those onsite native trees, they would count as double canopy towards the 40%. If they install new trees, it's just a straight one. It's a, you know, it's just a one, one to one. I don't know how to say that. It's just, you get, you get credit for the canopy, for the canopy of that specific tree. It's not double. So the way the code is intended to work is in theory, all, you know, unfortunately, I guess all the trees could be removed as long as the 40% canopy is obtained through new canopy. The, the incentive, if you will, is to preserve the onsite trees because they're mature. They add to the, to the value of the site and then you get double canopy. So interestingly, preservation of existing trees at times leads to less canopy overall because it's actually being counted as double. So if all, if you met the canopy through all existing trees, it would actually only be a 20% canopy over the site. So that's generally how the code works. In this case, the applicant's proposing to preserve two trees. They would get double canopy credit for those. And then it sounds like the rest is going to be made through a, through new plantings. I, if I heard correctly, there may be an attempt to preserve a few other trees. I don't know if I heard that correctly. So I apologize if that wasn't the case. If that is, then, you know, it might be good to just identify what those trees are, the DBH, the size, and then give credit for those. If not, then the code would allow removal of the trees and replenishment of the 40% through new plantings.
And that's done through an arborist providing a report to staff at the time they do the final submittal.
Correct. The code says qualified professional, doesn't necessarily mean an arborist. But yeah, qualified professional would determine the calculation verified by staff.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Barnes, any more questions?
Yeah, these might be questions more for staff, which I think are pertinent here. But the, the questions I have are, are part of the conditions, which may be described in, in the next, the next hearing. So for example, performance criteria for some of the species that are planted, the landscape plants, five-year performance criteria. I think the applicant had mentioned edge in terms of property management. You know, if some of those planted trees, for example, fail, what's, is it in the perpetuity of the, the life of the project that those trees will be replaced? Or is that codified? And I just missed that somewhere.
I can speak to that. We, and I think this is why people like Sherwood and want to invest in Sherwood. We have a great code compliance program. So the, the site, all sites in Sherwood are required to be maintained in accordance with the land use approval, including the landscape plans. I won't give any names. Usually it's commercial properties that kind of, you know, have trees, you know, taken down over time in the parking lot and so forth. And, and we do enforce that through code compliance.
Excellent. Okay, I've got last question here and apologies for rambling. The site plan has, as you mentioned, quite a large parking lot. And is there a reason why that parking lot itself, given the fact that the site is right now a wetland where water settles, not a, considered an impervious parking lot? Or porous parking lot, rather?
Okay.
But maybe if you can speak to the stormwater management approach?
Yeah, I don't do, you know, what Jason said. Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, we're not, yeah, we haven't discussed previous pavement. It could be an option that we could talk about in the future. But our current proposal is to have underground stormwater, stormwater management facilities under the parking lot to collect that. to collect that extra runoff that's sort of existing right now.
Thank you.
And I'll just weigh in here. Stormwater management is, I'm sure you know this, Commissioner Barnes, in your world, fair, in this region fairly regulated by clean, heavily regulated by Clean Water Services. And so they have provided and, and have been conditioned to comply with the, the latest Clean Water Services regulations. So they have, there's a preliminary stormwater report. And then there's a, there, there will be required to have a final stormwater report. I'll just say Clean Water Services standards are quite strict is, is what we hear a lot. And so, you know, to, to meet those standards, especially going from a greenfield to impervious area, they, they really got to, they really got to manage both the, the flow of the water through, through that system. And the release rate is heavily controlled and regulated. And also the quality of the water when it gets released is also heavily regulated by Clean Water Services and the city of Sherwood.
Excellent. Yeah, just to follow up, the previous applicant that went through and received Clean Water Services authorization included rain gardens in their design. Now, I know you had mentioned there's quite a bit of open space down by the field or the area next to the basketball court. Was there any thought to including a swale or a similar rain feature?
We tossed that around, and I apologize. Our civil engineer and city engineer, their conversation is kind of, I think, what led to the underground. We did have, I think, just at the exit, we had those, like, those features on that emergency active side. And I, like, I apologize because I don't know exactly why it ended up being, maybe in the report. It just, they ended up settling on the underground. Is, yeah, so I just, I don't really, I think originally that was our plan. I think we even had that in the original when we submitted to you guys. But just with, with the civil guys working together, that's where we ended up.
Thanks. Just curious.
Thank you very much. Any other questions from the commission to the applicant before we ask for public testimony? All right, and you only officially use seven minutes and 25 seconds. So you have a lot available for rebuttal, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so now I'm going to ask if anyone would wish to speak in favor of the application before I call on. All right, then I have a blue card for the first opponent, Lawrence Bové. Yes, there's four minutes.
Four minutes.
Four minutes to, we'll kind of give you like a, one of the gentlemen will give you a high sign at one-minute warning.
So I'm Lawrence Bové. I'm at, I live right there on Pine Street, right across from that. Basically where the exit on Pine Street is where my apartment is. Do you need my address?
Nope.
Whole address?
Nope.
No.
So the main thing I'm worried about here is about a year ago, somebody came in there and started digging around and pushed over a few trees. And almost immediately, water was out. There was puddling of water. That whole area is basically a swamp. And so any kind of construction you're going to have and go in there, there's water. And it's also a sponge. There's so much life in that area. That entire wall along Pine Avenue is a communal Marionberry bush. There's nothing but life in there. And if you knock that out, you're going to kill, hold on a minute. You should hear these crickets when they get going in the middle of summer. It's a cacophony of them. But it's, it's all going to be wiped out with this plant. Like I said, construction of the, you need more about the, you're going to have a huge cost on your landscaping in terms of foundations. Because that is swamp. It's river bottom. It's also, and the other thing is, all of these areas around it, I know that some neighbors of mine constantly having to sump out their basements or their backyards and dumping because water is pouring in there. So this area is going to be a giant flood zone if you take it out. And if you, if you don't mitigate for, this plan doesn't sound like it's really considering how much water is in there. And like I said, it's also a nice little ocean of life. There is so much life in there. Birds, rabbits, coyotes, insects, okay? So if you get out of that and you're just turning it into sidewalks and parking lot, I would urge you strongly to just let this be alive right here. Everybody loves that area. Everybody, it's like I said, it's a communal Marionberry bush right there. Leave it alone. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next blue card, Cindy Rukowski. My apologies if I mispronounce. What we got?
Cindy Rukowski. I live here in Old Town in a Bowman house. So I'm coming to this considering also the Old Town strategic plan, where you want to have a whole bunch of these sorts of high-density residences along Columbia Street. So when I look at this, while they say there's a whole lot of green space, there's strips around and basketball court play area. So there's, there's a lack of green space for this high-resi, high-density residential area. They're going to remove all but two trees. This is, as the gentleman said, a swampy wetland. They're going to have to fill a whole bunch. So there's a huge ecological loss there. The trees that will be replaced will be street tree style in really narrow bands along the front of the building or the edges of the building. That doesn't replace ecological, ecological value, nor does it give you the shade and ambiance that you hope for in a residential area. We all love our big trees and we all love to go hang out and have a picnic under a big tree. And another bigger issue is these will be rentals. We in Sherwood, we need more housing, yes. It'd be nice to have more affordable housing so people like my daughter could live here. And so we will have yet again more rentals that many folks can't afford. And we saw how long those Oregon Street rentals near the roundabout, how long they stayed empty. And I think there might even be one or two left that are empty. So as we go forward and we do our strategic plan for Old Town Sherwood, do we need a whole bunch of high-density rentals for us that don't have green space, space for knowing your neighbors, and having parking disasters? Because particularly if Columbia becomes the way in, you know, there's already parking issues from the Cannery area. So while I don't object in the huge to this project, I, I think there are things that could be better done. And we need more trees. And we need more value space for the folks that live there rather than a, I just, I just sleep there. I'm not a member of the community. I don't participate. I'm not connected to my neighbors. And living in Sherwood, connecting to our neighbors is something that's really important to us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So I have one more card, Becky Lanning.
Hi, I'm Becky Lanning. I live on Southwest Division Street, 15760. So two blocks from Old Town. I know from Cannery Square Apartments that they are, they pay their rent, but they have to pay extra for parking. So many people can't afford the extra that they pay for parking there. So they park on the street. So I'm wondering whether the applicant can let us know whether he's including parking with the rent price or whether they have to pay something additional. There's 40 off-street parking spaces with 40% of those being electric. Is that what I heard? So not everyone would have electric cars necessarily there. So most apartments have two cars per apartment. And so that would be 64-plus cars and 40 parking spaces with 40 of those, 40% of those electric. Where are those cars going to park? If it's like Cannery Row, they're going to be all over the street, all over here, parking along by Cannery Square. And I'm wondering how that will take up space for shoppers downtown and all the extra traffic that's adding to the little Old Town here on, with all that apartment, too. I'm wondering if the applicant has even considered less apartments and a little more parking so that it, it works better? And then more green space and possibly take out the basketball court, allow that to be more green space also. But I think the plan is good. I think it looks nice. But again, the trees, the parking, those are my biggest concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. So as volunteers and assistants of Sherwood, I'm going to do my best to answer a couple of the questions. And staff is probably cringing because they've done a better job in doing this in their presentation. And I'm going to start with the parking. And unless you're doing like what we're doing up here and reading applications and following like our, our city council's doing, what the state has changed our, our parking requirements. So because they're with, you know, because they're providing 40 parking spaces, I, I thank them because they are actually providing an amenity towards their residents that wouldn't be required by the state code. So it is, it is to their residents' benefit to have these parking spaces. And it's a benefit to our community. And, but they're not required to do it. So I'm really thankful that they are doing it. The 40% electric, again, is it, just for clarification, they're not required to put in 40% electric parking spaces. The state requires that they put in the conduit so that if it turns into electric, the conduit's already there. They're not going to build 40% electric. They're going to provide the possibility for 40% to be turned into electric. And that's what I know about parking. So, and I, and I think Hugo addressed some of these other things in his staff report about the, the open space and the active space is, is a requirement in our code. And so we have, as a commission, we can't, we can't vote whether we like or don't like a project. We have to vote by what's in the code. And so when, when people come in to say, well, this, I don't, I don't like this. I think you shouldn't vote for it. We have to look at what's in the code. And the staff did a really good job lining out what, what the applicant has to comply with. He, there are pages and pages. There's two three-ring binders that we had to read to go through to make sure that the applicant submitted all the things that were in the code. And that's what we have to measure it on. It's, it's a, it's whether they met the code, not, not some of the other things that people are worried about. And I would invite anybody, if you have further questions about what's in the code or not in the code, to reach out to that email that, that Eric provided to help understand what, what we as commissioners are looking at. And so many of you are new. It's hard to, it's hard to grasp it all when you've, when this is the first time you've ever seen a hearing. And, and I really thank everybody for coming up and testifying this evening and getting involved and being part of this process. So before I go on, I'll let staff correct anything I said about parking that's not right, and then address any other questions that came up that, that need direct answers to them. And before I do that, I'm going to just make sure there, those are the only blue cards that I have. If you wish to testify this evening, we ask that you turn in the blue card. And as we said earlier, this will be, we'll take a vote. But at recommendation of staff, we will be continuing this to October 28th. So not your only opportunity this evening. So I don't see anybody racing for blue, blue cards. So I'll let staff answer a couple of questions and then we'll have the applicant come back up for rebuttal.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. So I think that that was a good overview of the comments that were provided. I think staff just would like to add a couple layers to that. There was a comment specifically talking about kind of rentals versus ownership. Within the development code, we do not manage the, like, the type of development, whether it is a rental or whether it is homeownership. We're looking at the structure in and of itself and how it complies with Title 16, which is, again, our zoning and development code. Essentially, it is a list of all the applicable regulations that would apply to a project on a subject property. And then just talking about the conduits. So that, that's correct. The conduits are just something that they have to install that isn't designating or reserving it specifically for electrical vehicles just in the future when that conversion, if and when it happens, is available. And that was something that came from the state legislation.
And then can you speak to the, the flood zone concern?
Yeah, I can, I can take that one. So the, the site does have a wetland on it. It's, it's been there a long time. The, the code allows fill of the wetland, but the applicant is required to mitigate, and that's on a one-to-one basis. So the square footage of that wetland has been calculated. And actually, because there was a previous developer interested in this site, basically that, the process, not, of course, of filling the wetland, but of mitigating the wetland, has been completed. And they have, they have paid a fee into a wetland bank. I believe it's near Hillsborough, Beaverton. Basically, the code requires that the mitigation occurs one-to-one basis within the same drain, within the same river basin, which is the Tuolleton River Basin. So although it's not extremely local here in Sherwood, the code allows mitigation within the larger, the truly larger ecosystem. And so they have paid into that mitigation bank. The city shares the concerns about water, water management. And as I mentioned earlier, that there is a preliminary stormwater report indicates that the water can be managed. I, I do think that, you know, water management during construction is going to be really important. We have a great engineering team. They'll be paying attention. We're, we're right across the street. So we won't hesitate to go over there and check on stormwater and erosion control management measures. And, you know, prior to issuance of grading permits and building permits, et cetera, there's going to, you know, they, they have to demonstrate compliance with Clean Water Services standards. And as I mentioned, they are, they are quite strict in terms of the, the collection of water, the, the flow, the, the rate of the release, and then the quality of the water as it's released as well. All of those are regulated.
All right, so I don't have any other proponents or opponents. So, and no one coming up for neutral testimony. So I would ask if the applicant wishes to provide rebuttal testimony this evening or reserve it until the second hearing on the 28th?
Yeah, just a point of clarification, we would start over and they'd have a new 30 minutes at the, at the continued hearing.
It's like a win-win then. You can rebuttal this evening and have 30 minutes at our 28th meeting.
We don't have rebuttal.
Okay. Does the staff have anything to add which addresses, oh, I already, I did it out of order, questions raised during the testimony? All right, knowing that we're going to be continuing the hearing and there's gonna be revised conditions, I'd ask that if there are any questions that any member of the commission has that could affect the conditions of approval or the staff report or the findings, would you ask the questions at this time so that we can have staffs? And then we'll also take a general consensus to the existing recommendations that were recommended during the staff report. A vote, an informal vote, not an informal vote, a poll, thank you. We will take a poll of the commissioners to confirm agreement with the previously recommended revised conditions and findings from the staff report. So we'll take that poll before we go any further. All those in favor of accepting the changes in the staff report, slide 23 or whatever it was?
Yeah, presentation.
Presentation, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, so that poll, staff has the ability to continue on with the revised staff report for our next meeting. Are there any other questions or comments regarding clarification on the testimony or the staff report?
Yes?
I have a quick question based on public comment. Is there anything in our code relating to how the ability to charge for parking versus parking being included? Or is, is there nothing about that?
That's a great question. Part of CFEC would have allowed, allowed that or required it under one circumstance. There was multiple options. The interesting, the commercial zones in Sherwood do require detachment of the lease of the building versus the lease of the parking. And so basically, you, you, in a commercial district, you can, the, the property owner cannot include the parking as part of the building lease. They have to be detached, they have to pay, they have to pay separate for it. In residential, there's no requirement. So the answer is, there's, there's really no code that regulates that right now.
So just to make sure I understood the, a developer could choose to make parking free or a developer could choose to not make parking?
You said it better than I did, thank you.
All right. So I am not closing the public portion, so we are going to take a vote to continue this hearing to a date certain of October 28th, keeping the record open, both for written testimony submitted to the staff or for public testimony at our October 18th. Do I have a motion for the continuance?
So moved.
October 28th?
Correct.
Okay, not 18, okay, thanks.
Oh, 28th, sorry, sorry.
Do you need?
So at 7:00 PM.
At 7:00 PM. Is there official language?
Would you, would staff like official?
No, we just need a motion for a continuance.
All right. Oh, go for it.
Is there any language that needs to be included in the motion from, from the slide?
Nope, we already took a poll.
Okay.
Just, just a simple continuance.
Okay. I move the Sherwood Planning Commission, continue the public hearing on the application for LU 2025 007 SPBAR until October 28th?
At 7.
At 7:00 PM.
Is there a second? Many times. All right, all in favor of the continuance to October 28th at 7:00 PM, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right. That concludes this hearing process for this evening.
And reiterate, if any members of the public want to touch base with Hugo and I, please stop by, call us, email us, happy to, happy to chat.
All right, thank you. All right. Sorry, moving back to my agenda item, it's new business. Is there any new business? And then I, under Commissioner comments, because I flipped right in there, I wanted to acknowledge, I believe Counselor Mays received an recognition and I think also Mayor Rosener did too, but Keith Mays received a Hatfield Statements Award for his years of service in, in the, both in the Sherwood community and at our community in general. And I think I would just want to recognize Keith has done a lot of work in this community over the years. And as many times as we can recognize people that do good work, I thank Counselor Mays and Mayor Rosener for the work that they've done on behalf of the city of Sherwood, so.
I think I, I hope I'm quoting this right, I think it was 28 years of service as either mayor or counselor. And then Mayor Rosener is now the Vice President of the League of Oregon Cities. And so he has, you know, very much the ear of, of Salem and trying to help steer where cities are going and try to give them a louder voice there, so. In addition to a lot of other stuff he does.
In addition to a lot of other stuff. Just like the Planning Commission, our city council is volunteers and the amount of work and time that all the counselors put in to help our community is, is truly unrecognized by a regular citizen. They don't know the hours of work that go in, just Counselor Giles is, is not only on the council, he's on Planning Commission. And I don't know how many other meetings you attend on our behalf, but it is, it needs to be recognized. So I appreciate, appreciate all that's done. Are there any other Commissioner comments? All right, then if there's no others, I, we will adjourn. All right, hearing done. Commissioner Barnes, thank you very much for attending this evening.
Oh, yeah.
I appreciate that. All right, we are adjourned.
Thank you.